Not, not a problem, that's good. Our mayor's not here, but our agenda is short. Uh, we shouldn't be long. Um, and let's begin basically with the first. Plightell, which would be discussion updates. Senior External Affairs Specialist Christina Brown, is she here?
Yes.
Oh, good. Uh, you may come to the front table, rest yourself.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, this is Christina Brown, Senior External Affairs with Delmar Power and.
You had to pull the mic.
Pull the mic up there.
Yeah, this, um, Christina Brown, Senior External Affairs Manager with, um, with Delmar Power. And, I mean, I don't want to have anything to address today. I think I spoke with Catherine Adams earlier. And she had like a streetlight outage and we talked about that. And, um.
So do I mention to you about, up here by James Street?
Well, this one that, uh, from Sherwin Street.
It was, it was Clinton Street. It, it was, and, and I do remember you being here previously, but it was Clinton Street. And for some unknown reason, it appeared in June and I think three weeks ago it was repaired. It was just a longevity of, of it being out. And one of the ladies complained that, uh, which was, uh, which was all her part, the fact that she lives alone, but also, you know, it presented a, a, a dark presence when normally you had a lighted presence, but it's okay, I guess, at this point.
Okay. Um, yeah, so if you have any, I didn't know anything about it. If you have any like issues like that, I would just say, no, you can notify me and I can talk to my servicemen and we can go out and see what's going on.
Well, I've suggested to many people, and I guess our board knows that too, you have that little tag on the pole and actually anybody that's a resident in the town of Elkton can actually call that in to you.
That's correct. Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yep. So then you, if you, if you have like, if you want to know the status, you can call in and see, hey, what's the status on this, this streetlight outage order. As well, yeah. So we can call in and check, see.
Certainly we welcome your presence. We won't keep you any longer than what you have to be here. So again, thank you for coming down.
Thank you. Did you guys have anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay.
We've got a couple of streetlights, I think I'll, I'll report.
Okay. That's good.
Dan, did you have something? Power to our root and more to interconnect?
Yes, yes. Um, I just, you know, I, I emailed you like a week ago to see, um, there's a work order to get power to the, uh, Artesian Interconnect. Can you, can you check the status of that one?
Yes, it looks like it's a new order. So our senior work planner, he hasn't even like assigned it out yet, but.
It was put out in twenty twenty-three, but it's been ready to go hopefully, so.
Yeah, so I think, um, I can check with them again, but I did send a message still last week, but we'll see if they give a new order.
How long, how long you typically wrote this? We need to know because we just tied it. We have an agreement kind of sitting at that's why, so.
Um, I was trying to have it as well covered this week. I think, I think we just go to the senior work planner and see what happens. Or just, things like this.
And you can tell if you email me, I'll tell the board this time. Okay.
Um, just, thank you.
The reason I brought that up is the, um, ADR contractor has finished, uh, the work on the thing with, uh, we don't have power, so we can't test telemetry or anything. So until Delmar Vic sends service and activates it, um, we're dead in the water, that interconnect.
Yeah.
And I've postponed the commencement with the Artesian twice so far. Cause they'll kick in at two fifty, uh, month, uh, mandate.
That's all. Thanks. That concludes your presence here. So again, uh, have a good afternoon. Next following the agenda, we have, uh, Main Street Landscape and Mr. Bill Bayton.
Correct.
You wanna come forward if you will, please?
Okay, whatever.
And would you introduce both of you? So we get, uh, what some of the snuggie, but still, amount of courtesy. For a minute.
Yep. Uh, first of all, I want to say good afternoon to all. Uh, thank you very much for having us here. Uh, I'm Bill Bayton Senior. Uh, this is Bill Bayton Junior. Uh, he's President of Bay Country. And, um, we have a, we're happy to be here to show a vision of what we think Main Street in Elkton can be. So we'd like to get started with that if, uh, there aren't any questions in the beginning, though, uh.
So your presence is by, uh, the out of the lines? Uh, or asking to be here?
I'm gonna say that's probably, uh, Department of Public Works.
Okay, so that's you there.
We, we, we talked about this meeting in July. It's just, you know, we had a, we had a walkthrough, um, with, with, um, Bay, uh, Bay Country, the Alliance and everything. And then, you know, the, uh, August workshop was canceled, that's why in, uh, September. This is like a workshop and what I'm trying to do is just keep your visions, give and take. So I asked, um, Bay Country, like, anyone's out there, what do you envision? That kind of stuff, because they know more about the, uh, passive material that I have here, so it's which will shout.
Uh, my question is, I, there was a request.
Yeah.
To, to give a, a, a vision for us or from the town board as to vision for you, give us this. I'm asking this because I know there's all the landscapers.
Sure.
We deal with, where everybody involved or just you? That's what I'm asking. Because you, you're the only one on there, right? And I'm looking in this audience, I see another one that we use. Okay, I'm just asking because I want to know controversy because we had you do something, someone else put in, get the opportunity to give us the vision that you guys want, that we don't know what you, what we asked for.
Yeah.
You hear what I'm saying?
Sure.
Cause I'm sitting here listening, but go ahead.
No disrespect to you at all.
Oh, no, we're not.
It's actually a Dan question, not, not a Bay Country question.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Nancy.
So should we proceed?
Yes.
Agenda.
All right. So what we wanted to, am I able to, um?
Yes.
Be cheerful.
Yeah.
While Bill's working on that, one of the things that, um, now I'm a lot, uh, lifelong resident of Elkton, Maryland. Uh, born and raised here. And, uh, some of the things that as our company has grown, we look at things, uh, as where is Main Street in Elkton today? Uh, I know we had a meeting here, uh, probably about a month or so ago, uh, Rob was, uh, involved with that. And we were looking at Main Street and looking at it, there's, uh, there's a lot that we can do. If we were to take a walk and enjoy that walk up, uh, Main Street, we would see a lot of things that we should be replacing and taking care of as a town. So all we wanted to do was bring that vision forward to see what some examples would look like. And I think that part is important as a foundation to work from, for what we can be. Uh, so that is the main reason for the streetscape. Yeah. Okay, so what we did to create a vision, what we wanted to do was actually go down Main Street, starting, uh, you know, right here by American Home and Hardware. That would be Block A going down to the post office. Block B is the area where, uh, uh, we have Howard House and all the way down to the area where we have the courthouse today. And if we look at that today, we can start with Block A. Not, not too good?
No, it's just kind of blurry and.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm just too.
Well, this, this is a little, you know.
Do you all have one of those?
This?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I see. It's attached to our baggage. Yes, we can look with you as you do.
So this will be Block A.
Yeah.
And, yeah, the, um, the shaded background is a little bit hard to do with the, uh, with coloring, so we can enhance this and, and reset the necessary.
Okay. So at this point, the idea is what we're taking look i- is to create a pattern of texture and color as you would walk down Main Street. So in doing so, there is a lot of material that is going to have to come out that is beyond its use today. Most of it, trees are dead, need to come out, and I can see that's been happening. And what we want to do is create an avenue where it's just not trees and pit planters. We want to create a little more texture, uh, with, um, planters, uh, the type of trees that we need to put in here instead of what was in there. Uh, we want to create more of an ornamental and columnar type, uh, tree situation where it's easy, easily to be maintained. Not a lot of cost with that. So as we walk through this area here and we go down by the post office and we start moving down into what would be Block B, pretty much the same thing. We could create a pattern all the way through here, which would be the same as Block A, Block N C. So Block C would be up by the, uh, courthouse, which is, uh, this area here used to have quite a bit of plant material in it. Uh, Cecil County took it out. We should probably do something there, or they should. So as we go forward to this, we give notes on the things that we can change, uh, you know, as part of the program. That would be benches and, uh, other things in reference to some of the pavers that are a tripping hazard. I'm sure that you've seen that. A nice thing about having pavers is that they can be brought back up. We can resettle that area and put them back, so that way they're not a tripping hazard.
You're talking about the red brick?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. So as we move forward from this, we're gonna show exactly what we have today and what we'd like to change and what, what our vision. So we take a look at this and this is the after. So we can tell that we've re-instituted, uh, an ornamental type tree. This is an oak can cherry, which is fairly columnar, uh, will not have problems with branches being out over the road or creating any kind of, uh, problem for, uh, heavy truck use. We also thought that putting in some planters would create a more of a texture with color that is easily maintained and not so much down in here, you know, in the base of the pa- where the pavers are. Um, but we have a lot of transition points between pavers and sidewalk. And if you see that, that's where a, a lot of, we have areas that, uh, uh, are just not level. So we move forward, Bill. This is up by the Howard House. We can see that, uh, this tree is now gone, but this was here when we did our site analysis. And if we go to the after, it definitely gives us a lot to, uh, of what we can do. Different changes, uh, again, we're gonna use a lot of planters. Materials that will go into these beds will be perennials, something where we're not putting annuals in every year. That's a, that can be a, a pretty high cost. Uh, so we have a base of perennials that we could use for that very, very easily. So what we've done is we've given you a cross functional of being able to show you what these, uh, tree planters can be, what's going to be in there, uh, the different types of trees that we can use that, uh, will have some distance and some length of time in there. And some of the materials that we would use as perennials, that's in, in your packet. This part here is what I truly would love to recommend, is the Belgian block versus the long, uh, tight curbing that is being used for, uh, the, uh, tree pits now. Uh, we use this, we're looking at at least probably an eight to ten inch height. Uh, any kind of tripping hazard is gone at that point, where for these, they're only about three to four inches and have created tripping hazard. So what you have now. So we'd love to go with that Belgian block. Not, yeah, another good thing about this is if something hits this and knocks it out, two or three stones, we can put them right back in and re-mortar them and it's done. If we hit one of those long eight to ten foot, uh, curving that's in there now and crack it in the middle, you're gonna have to replace it. Much cheaper to replace one of these or not replace it at all, just put it back in and re-mortar it.
Are you saying, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is something that you would implement around the existing?
No, we would take that piece out.
Trees that are there.
Yeah, well, not many trees are there right now.
Well.
Yeah, but I.
All right, well, where the current landscaping is, it's just, okay, there's a little section.
Yeah, now we may, depending on what our vision is down the road, as we, uh, decide how far you want to go with this, we might change the size of those planters. Uh, for example, in front of the old J.J. Newberry's is a, that's a beautiful area to work with. Those two planters could turn into something really, really, uh, just gorgeous, that area. There's a lot of area there. Now, just go through this quickly. Uh, these are some of the furnishings that, uh, we, uh, had given some thought to in reference to the areas, benches. So we can run through that. Planters. This is what we were talking about, creating texture and color throughout all of Main Street. So. These planters are a little different, uh, a little more upscale, uh, more modern. I don't, don't know if you guys would like that or not, but we thought we would put this in the program, in the plan, uh, so that you can get an idea of, uh, what these things would look like. And then we have a, uh, an additional page after this one, which shows other areas that have gone ahead and used these design programs, uh, for their Main Streets. And we just kind of want to give an idea of how that would look. Different type of horn beam here, very narrow, columnar. Uh, doesn't get in the way of anything. Uh, beautiful, beautiful tree. And we want to say thank you for having us, uh, join in here. But we really appreciate that. Uh, I think, uh, just having a vision of downtown Elkton Main Street is something that we all look forward to and, uh, anticipate as, uh, you know, we go into a few years ahead of us here. So, any question? Anybody?
You said that you live here and so have I and so have other people and myself, I envision, and I'm using my opinion, is that Main Street is a thoroughfare and a lot of people, uh, of course shop down there, those that have things that are visible, who they are. But what about the auxiliary streets? And I'm saying a street like North Street here, how would you tie that in and mesh that together? Because I still see and certainly a lot of the traffic still downtown here, we just got well, the one bank there, you have things here, uh. How do you incorporate that into, or are you one of those to say, we just do Main Street and we're done?
That's not necessary at all. We can move forward to the, uh, lateral streets if that were, were to be something that you wanted to do. We just wanted to give a vision of where to start and maybe have a beginning of, uh, what we're gonna do here in the town of Elkton. So if there's other areas, uh, yeah, I'd love to be able to put a vision together for that. I think that'd be great.
And you said there are different styles of planters.
Oh, there are.
Available.
There, there's myriad.
I would, yeah, I would hope that Alicia, that you would really be involved in that because it needs to fit the theme of what you're going for in downtown Elkton. Um, you know, it has to be geared that way. I'm sure you would like to be a part of that.
Well, I can tell you Alicia's flowers are, you know, gorgeous.
Thank you.
That's.
So, so although when you talk of Bay Street, so that decoration begins where and ends where, or on the opposite side begins where and ends where? So you talking about what you've shown, American Home and Hardware from that point down to where?
South Street.
Courthouse.
Courthouse.
And you saying in South Street, we saying Courthouse.
In that, well, I guess they're.
South Street, right past the courthouse.
Yeah.
Right past the Orange County.
Sorry.
So what happens to the other buildings that exist that actually goes down to South Street? Uh, long ago, that used to be part of downtown and certainly you have a lot of traffic down there and you have a lot of pedestrians that walk when you want some model there as well as what you're presenting to be a part of that.
This, oh, go ahead, Bill. Uh, I'm just gonna say that.
Are you understand, understand what I'm going through?
What's that, sir?
You understand what I'm saying?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, this is really just to put the ball at the top of the hill, not even to get it, you know, just to get it rolling. Um, you know, we, we have a vision of, of what Elkton Main Street could be, that doesn't mean that it has to stop or end at a certain area. Um, you know, it all depends on what the commission would like to do and or if it even moves forward. Uh, there's a lot of different steps that we would have to go through to be able to even pursue this. Our eyes can be possibility, right? So if you wanted to include side streets, perfectly fine. It's just a matter of how far you want to go and or what you want to do with it. Like this is just the initial kind of, you know, spark. You know, firework. Definitely move and move side streets if that's something that you want to discuss.
The side street, obviously, it was just that the main, as you said, Main Street, Main Street has to be in someplace and in someplace with decorations as well.
On, yeah, on the, on the diagram, we had from basically, uh, the intersection with Bridge and Main Street. Have, uh, American Home and Hardware on the one corner and, uh, the former, uh, medical, or the, the medical office on the other corner, uh, with escapes right there as well, and then going all the way down to the courthouse. Mm-hmm.
Good. Yes, ma'am.
I feel like, um, this is a great conversation we're having. It's something that we've been talking about at least as long as I've been in your mind. And I feel like from a, from a, um, planning purposes, we could do a couple of things. I mean, certainly I feel that we could look like what the state calls downtown. You know, what our downtown district is. I think that's a really good place to start. But then I also feel like there's gotta be some, some transitions. I think the majority of the work that would take place is probably gonna be exactly where, um, they are suggesting. And I feel like it almost has to transition. It can't be like a hard stop. It can't be flowers and trees and beautiful. And then at South Street, the rest of, you know, Maine going up towards, you know, featured plan area just is nothing. Um, so I think I feel like there would be like a transition plan on where things could start to sort of, I hate to say, but sort of fizzled out. And then I do feel like North Street with the amount of businesses that we're seeing coming to New Street, I think that that can't be lucked out. We don't need anybody to feel like redheaded stepchild and feel like, you know, we're really only focused on the Main Street corridor, if you will. And that, and, you know, North Street is definitely part of downtown. Is some of Ridge Street, maybe, you know, I think that's a conversation that would need to happen as, as planning started to happen with, with the board.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And James, um, so North Street was mentioned in the Sustainable Communities Plan to make, to create a streetscape for North Street. And perhaps this is something where we could incorporate upgrading Maine and then including North Street in a community legacy brand application next year. That, that may pay for that, I believe.
Well, that, that takes me to my question on money.
We need a plan, I need a cost estimate.
For even, yeah, I mean, at what point would you come to us with, uh, an, an estimate of, you know, of, I know it's hard to do if you haven't picked out how much you're gonna do and what planters you're gonna use and whether you're gonna have benches or not. But we would have to have at least a general idea.
Sure.
Of what this presentation would cost.
Right, yeah. Now, that's something that we can work on specifically for what we've presented.
Right.
One, option two.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then from there, we can, you know, have discussions forward, you know, off of that. But, yeah, certainly it's gonna be obviously price dependent, you know.
Absolutely. I mean, is there like, um, a guesstimate on what range we're looking at?
It's hard to put a full number on it just because those park benches, you know, they could range from eight hundred to fifteen hundred dollars per piece. Um, and that's just, you know, purchase. And then we go into brick repair, how many bricks are we gonna, or how many square footage are we gonna, you know, repair? And so if, what we could do is certainly create something for you and then move off of that. But, uh, to put a number, this is again more just a vision type of, uh, yeah, and we can throw numbers out there where we say, hey, you might be somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand, but that could only encompass maybe a piece of this. We don't know yet. You know, uh, if you guys say, we really love large mature trees because we can get the initial shade right away. Let's get a six inch caliber tree in there. That might cost itself three grand or something like that, you know, and so when we extrapolate that out, we could be looking at costs that move north very, very quick.
Absolutely. Understood.
Could we present you with our own budget as far as how much we want to spend and you can show us what we can get with that amount?
That would be phenomenal, cause then we could, you know, maximize, maximize budget. And, and again, we, what we're looking at is a multi-year possible project as well, because, you know, what we're trying to do is entice people into Elkton, right? We've got a whole brand new community running down on two thirteen. Uh, you know, they've got the access to Chesapeake City right there, but also let's, let's bring them in here. We've got new businesses coming in. Um, and, you know, we want to create, uh, a Main Street that is welcoming and, and inviting and, and create some new possibilities for, for new people.
I did have a few things that I was concerned about. I would not recommend planters that are small enough to pick up.
Sure.
Or even tip over, because I've had to pick up a couple of trashcans downtown. They have a group of kids and, uh, they push them over. And I was surprised when I went to pick one up, it had some weight to it. Um, so I wouldn't go with any too small on planters. So although, I mean, this is all very romantic and it looks great, but you gotta look at reality. Um, the other thing was the, uh, oh, the benches, I don't want at all. But if we do have them, because they become purchased and nobody wants to sit on them because they're occupied. And my observance is downtown over days. Um, if we do have them, I would, I would have to strongly suggest a center rail that prevents anybody from lying down.
Yeah, that's great and white.
Uh, my last thing that I've made a note of was the Belgian block.
Yes.
Still a tripping hazard. I don't care how, you know, it's still a tripping hazard, especially the way people walk around looking at their phone while they're walking. I would be worried about that. I know when we met and walked the street, we talked about a flat, uh, grate that you're like you see in the cities. I really liked that idea.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I don't like the blocks. I don't like the benches.
I'm seeing them where they've incorporated iron fencing around them too. Whether you'd have the raised block, but then there would be iron fencing, so it's sort of a little more protected and you're not gonna trip over, cause there's, uh.
That would actually as well.
Broad iron, like fencing, yeah.
That would keep.
Yeah, like, yeah, there's certain areas up in Philadelphia where they have wrought iron and it's only about this tall, um, and it surrounds three, three beds. In short, but, but it's certainly, you know, it's been used in other areas, um, just as a, you know, from experience. Uh, also in, um, the city of Newark, they do have the flat grates, but then they also have, um, vertical, um, vertical steel, uh, grates around trees as well, because we've had situations where we've installed trees there. Kids, again, you know, university deler kids will actually break trees sometimes or drive into them or whatever.
I've seen, yeah, in street.
Yep. And so, uh, the grates are, are good because it can withstand some of it, don't allow kids to pull on things. Um, so certainly there are different things that we can do that we've had experience with, that we've installed before, that we can make recommendations on.
All right, yeah, well, those were my concerns.
Yes, ma'am.
I would also ask that, um, whatever we're looking at includes the maintenance of what's done, right? Because, I mean, at least the, the flowers, I mean, the flowers on the side of the alliance that I planted, obviously we take care of. And then, um, some of the newer flowers that Scott's landscape and put in, we, we water. And, I mean, we certainly can do that where we can do it, but if we're talking about a much larger plan, you know, I'd want to make sure that we have a maintenance plan in place or whatever that looks like from a budgeting standpoint.
So in reference to cost estim- estimates, would, uh, um, would you like us to move forward on that to give you a general idea? Of what Block A, Block B and C, we can do that.
Well, there has to be a cost estimate because I, it sounds to me like this is a, um, project that is quite expensive and for that reason alone, we'd have to put it out, yeah.
Uh, we understand that, but we also understand that you need to have a basis to work from.
Right, and, and I would imagine like, take Alicia, take Jeannie, put them together and say, this is what we're looking for. This is what we prefer, you know, take everybody's comments consider, into consideration. This is what we prefer, you know, take everybody's comments consider, into consideration. Cuz they, no matter whether, no matter who, you know, the contractor is. They're gonna have to have an idea of what we're going for, whether we're, we do have benches or we don't have benches. We want that brick, we don't want that brick, we want it higher, we want it lower, we want it gone. All those little things have to be determined and then for style of painters and things like that have to be picked. And agreed upon. Um, and maybe get, even if you broke it down in two phases, three phases, whatever, but. I, I'm personally willing. Jean and Alia- Alicia to be heavily involved in design concepts.
We need the cost estimate for the grant application.
Yeah.
That would help out tremendously.
Yeah, and I know you, you are so familiar with trees.
Not really. Regulations pertaining.
Oh, okay, but yeah.
I love you for that, Chief.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your time.
Dan, you have any closing comments?
No, let's, the, the only, the purpose of just having you, we just wanted to start a dialogue about the Main Street we're thinking about, you know, from here. You can get parts and pieces, you can talk to other people, whatever it is. The main thing I just wanted to come forth like. And we talked about this for years, you just wanna kind of like, like um, um, they go to say, basically, you know, we've got the ball on top of the hill. You know, it's just a spark or something. We just try to get an idea or direction that we can grow and improve Main Street. That's not be another one fell swoop, but that's, we just wanna have a dialogue, to see an idea what's out there. That's, that's, that's why I thought this was a good meeting for workshop. We can give a take to the board, with Jean, with Alicia and stuff, that's, that's what I'm getting at for the purpose. I think we succeeded that today, we just, you know, what's out there, wanna make sure.
Isn't really like a grant project. So, one of the ideas I had was um. The National Car Service was blown away by the gate that Ed did at Elton Land. And this would be a great opportunity for us to maybe have Ed design, if we were gonna be the grates around the trees. Design some sort of theme or something. He is magnificent at that. And could maybe do a little bits and pieces of kind of historical, something or other around each tree with a flat grate. If, if we're able to get him to do that.
I just showed Jean, um, I had found one, this is in Elton, West Virginia, where they actually grade Elton's, West Virginia into the grate. I'll show you after the meeting. Um, and it just, we had talked about branding of, of downtown Elton originally. And the opportunity to just sort of bring that vision into whatever is done in the final stage, I think would be really great. And Jean was saying, you know, it's stuff that I can do.
Ed, do that, I mean, that would be fabulous.
It would be. He's in, he's invaluable in that respect.
He's an artist.
Um, Rob, I think was, you were talking about the wall around the alliance.
Um, around their.
Off the wall, remember?
Yeah, yeah, well, I have been looking into um. What's the name of it? Aggressive architecture or something like that um. It's, it's, I don't like that word, you know, but um, based to prevent people from perching. We have a real problem downtown.
Yeah, I see, well, when they did that wall, when they repaired that wall with that, uh, we did this town square uh, project. The question came up as to whether we're gonna prevent people from sitting there or encourage it during like when the. And so that they left us.
But why, why, why is that wall a problem?
Come downtown and sit out front of my shop with me for a while. And you'll see. People sit on it a lot, not constantly, but quite often, right? You see it. Um, they make remarks to people going by on their way to C three or wherever they're going. They get, they get accosted. I see it.
Still have an answer my question, why is there a problem?
Cuz that's where they sit, that's where they're comfortable, we're making.
You know, how, how long you been in Elton and not to say that things can change. People have been sitting on that wall since Nickel and Egg or who, who was there downtown?
Not the same people though.
No, but that's what you got police agents for. You, again, wanna track people down there, so where they gonna sit? Unless you get benches. I even sit there.
It is, I don't hardly ever see people sitting unless it's vagrants. Nickel and Egg.
Nickel and Egg, alright, that is George. You're right, that was when you was a policeman, go ahead, go ahead, bro.
Uh, and it's, and it's a lot of the same people, so I, I would like to discourage.
It is a catch twenty-two, you know, obviously we're sitting. Twenty-two because um, months ago, a year ago, I think Officer Devine had put every uh, some ideas or suggestions in about some changes down there. To avoid what Commissioner Mastani is talking about. But then how do you do something, you can't do anything permanent because then when we have a parade or fall test or whatever. You, you really need to, cuz we do wanna draw people down there. And it. Commissioner Piney was down the other night, Friday night, and I said, can you please go out and ask that gentleman who's asleep on my bench to, to move? Um, and so he did. And so it is a catch twenty-two that you're, you're in a situation, how do you, how do you draw people down to utilize that space? But the right people. So that is the biggest challenge and, and whoever just said, you know, we have EPB and. I call them often, um, you know, Chief will tell you that there's definitely blocks of where we're calling and asking people to be moved along. And they're great and they can do it until they can't. They're busy, they have another, something they're working with.
But I guess you in essence is saying basically, uh, if we have an activity, we don't want them on the wall. We're not having any activity. Those people that stay in there sitting out there don't bother anybody.
I know, that's where we lose. Cuz it's nice to have when you want. With the rest of the time, I don't like what I see over there. I don't like what I see down in between the steps between my building, when there were benches down there and also at the top. Customers would come in all the time, you know, boy, that's scary coming up through there. Cuz they hung out down there. I had two girls come in one day and they were in tears. I'm not quite sure what they were told, cuz I can't remember, but it really upset me.
I think there's always pockets of areas, I think um, where Commissioner Mastani has often is one of the biggest pockets of, of challenge. Down and bone towards the municipal steps and then right in front of uh, the new Rise and Brian building, the old PNC building, I think that right now. And I do believe once that business is open, that will subside. And they just move along, they, they find their next location of where their pocket is of their energy.
Any other questions? Before we move out? Again, on behalf of the board, thank you for coming. I guess if we have any follow-up questions, we can see Alicia, the Alliance or anybody related to that. And with that, Louis, uh, do you have anything on your agenda to give to us?
No, sir, I am, I'm very quiet today.
Anyone on the board?
Um, I, well, give me a second. I did, I had something. Tyler, you gave us the suggestion for um, donation. And I guess between you and the chief, you determined that the Cecil Neighborhood Youth Panel. Uh, donation could be reduced to accommodate. Free up some money. For other um. Projects that we have um, or want to support. So how do we go about doing that? Do we have to change the amount with a vote or? What, what do we have to do, Louis? In order to take Tyler's recommendation. On the amount of donations that, you know, we're doing.
Yeah, that was to provide on potential funding, the um. Yeah, the um, waterways, I forget what they were.
I think.
That was the suggestion, cuz I discussed in, in the staff, the director's staff meeting. We had Chief Rogers had pointed out that uh, I guess at one point uh, uh, Youth Panel was representing. A greater number of youths within Elton, but over time that number has declined. And Chief Rogers had suggested as a potential, you know, way to maybe free up some of the donation funds. Was to reduce the contribution to the Cecil County Youth Panel.
Yes, well, I, I agree. I think uh, most of us agree that we wanted to contribute to the Waterway um. You know, to that entity, we, um, it's an important part of. Of what we need to do um, here, but so are there any other, I mean. Do we have a list of donations that are set?
That list per se, but historically there are re- routine referring. Um, and those were the ones that I had highlighted in the, at email that I sent out. Just indicating what, what we're currently giving to, and those are very consistent. Um, we go to certain, you know, certain dinners every year, certain Cecil County events every year. Uh, colored school contribution, um, you know, so there, those, those are pretty routine annually. Uh, and are recurring. We have some ad hoc stuff that comes up in there. You know, for example, the Fair Hill races this year was one of those ad hoc things that hasn't historically, it's a new thing. It just started, so that one was added. Um, so um, that, that was just to kind of give you all an idea of what we've contributed to and to what level in the past. Um, and then uh, the, the Youth Panel reduction was a possible way of working in. Um, uh, you know, the, the additional contribution that was being conned.
Right, well, with considering we have the support from the chief, I personally would like to move forward in that direction. So I don't know if everybody agrees or not.
That was a statement and a question.
Yeah, I mean, would you all agree that uh, on Tyler's recommendation and chief, that we could. We could change the amounts on those donations to accommodate what we wanna do?
Yeah, we should take a look at.
Like, I think at some point, when you get the total list of all those beneficents. And look at them, there are obviously some places where you can reduce.
Do you want that list?
I thought we were supposed.
I thought.
I was gonna bring that up. I thought at the last meeting, it was asked to have that list, give it to us, so we can go through there and see what you might wanna do.
Yeah.
To come up with whatever you want.
Yeah, alright. Make this happen by the next meeting?
You just want.
The list of what you proposed to us.
Everything, the donations and everything, I personally think, then that way you could, you get a whole picture, not just a, a limited view of. The neighborhood panel or anything else.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was what was in that email.
I know, but, yeah, I know, the, I, well, I'm looking at my email. I, I don't know if I didn't get an email. That. Had everything in it or not. I, I know that one I got from you. So, if he, you know, if Commissioner Givens is asking for it, he must not be aware of. Everything either.
Uh, you wanna just print it up and put in the packet for the next meeting?
I think so. We can make a decision maybe by, uh, definitely next meeting. Thank you.
Andy Rodriguez?
Uh, yes, thank you, Commissioners. Um, I do have a somewhat delicate employment policy. Um, question, uh, guidance that I need from the board might be more appropriate during a closed meeting off the side. However you wanna do it, I don't know if you have an extra five, ten minutes after this meeting, but um, something that came up, I, I need some assistance with.
Do that at the next meeting when it is a, a formal meeting that.
I can give you heads up by e- I can give you a heads up by email and uh, and then maybe it's something we want. Consider putting it on an agenda for a closed meeting for the next meeting, whatever you prefer.
Well, if it needs to be in a closed meeting, we're not, I mean.
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't know if it needs to be in a closed meeting, um. I just wanna. It's, it's not, it's not that, yeah, it's, it's not that uh, complex, but it is something I can't move forward with.
Well, could you give us a preview at the next meeting if we have to have a closed meeting and the mayor will be here? We'll be here in totality, then we can.
Yes, and I did get a preview to the, uh, to Louis George, the town administrator and also Al Line. Um, it's about um, an additional potential vacation consideration.
So it can wait or?
It can wait, but I, I, I'd like to, while you're here, for anyone who's been able, just to give you a little.
One-on-one?
One-on-one or two-on-one, whatever.
Yeah, it can be three-on-one.
No, can't be three-on-one.
And have we looked at when the employees get off for the Christmas break?
What's that, sir?
Have you looked at your calendar and one of the employees asked, so I'm bringing this to you. Christmas break, add it to the board. When do, when do they get off?
Uh, we have the town holidays already posted in the um, send the handbook, but let me just check for you real quick.
The Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
Um, it's the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, which is a Wednesday and Thursday and then twenty-sixth is a workday Friday.
But Earl will take care of that.
Well, we're gonna take care of it now. Twenty-sixth, you would suggest, anybody?
Uh, twenty-fourth is Christmas Eve on a Wednesday, twenty-fifth is Thursday of Christmas and twenty-sixth is Friday.
So they wouldn't be expected to come in on Friday under normal circumstances?
They would, I mean, right now, if you did nothing with employees, that would be a workday. Some employees generally would use, if they want a longer holiday break, would take a personal holiday or be.
Is Christmas Eve a half a day?
It's a full, full day holiday haul, Christmas Eve.
If you're gonna give them Friday, but. We might want a half a day, I don't know.
We can make a suggestion now and at the next meeting, we can just make it official, you know?
Uh, get Louis's recommendation, yeah.
No, we don't need Louis's recommendation for that. I just think it's something that we have to do as we've done before. If we find that's not appropriate.
It was just getting to the point where we, we know we're gonna have Christmas on Wednesday and Thursday. And then the, and police have to come back on Friday. We would like to extend that vacation for Friday and let them off and come back on Wednesday.
Right, you mean offer an additional holiday?
Yes, yes.
I think normally you vote on that, so. That's very nice, thank you, and we appreciate the uh, three months notice.
Still waiting till last day.
Yeah, it will, it does affect the budget.
We have employees that work regardless of the holiday.
Could you bring us at the next official meeting, who it may affect, who it may not affect, so we can make it official, not an overweight?
Sure, well, all police that are working that day get paid double time, so that's private.
Everybody's happy.
Maggie, is there any um. Questions coming from the uh, the board, I mean, not the board, the audience? Alliance, nothing to say?
Fall festival's next Friday and Saturday.
Wanna speak about it?
Um, no, we are fully thought out with sponsorships, registration is closed, we're at capacity for vendors, ready to go.
Lots of volunteers.
I could always use more volunteers.
And I'll be down there early.
Is there anyone online that would like to offer anything, the goods and the cards? Not hearing that.
Dan, I would like for you to reach out to Scott's Landscaping. They should be at least aware of this.
That's fine, like I said, this is a preliminary discussion, that's fine, yeah.
I, I understand, but um. Considering that we're currently contracted and um, the amount of work that they volunteered and did. Just out of respect, I think they should have been notified that this is happening. I didn't see them.
Yeah, there is.
I just want us all to be on the same page.
That's not an issue at all, that's fine.
And the other meeting in the journal?